Is here for that. Yeah, so we should call sometime. Start.
Okay.
As as you're probably waiting. You know something.
Good evening. Yeah, I called a meeting to order. Uh, first line of a um business is the approval of the minutes of April the twentieth twenty twenty two. So do I have a motion for that?
I motion to approve the minutes.
And I second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Eyes have it, motion carried. Our first line of a of um tonight is uh our subdivision and land development. A time extension on two twenty one to two and two twenty seven North Prince Street. Final land development.
Is there anyone here to represent that project? Hi, hi, Mr. Myers. Um, so just for some brief background and then maybe the applicant can come up and elaborate on this. Um, this is a final land development plan that was approved twenty twenty, I believe, yes, end of twenty twenty. Uh, and so um they had a year to meet the conditions of approval. Um, they were not able to do that. Um, so they requested a time extension. Um, I believe this is um the third time extension um that were uh that the planning commission is considering. So this would be a time extension to meet the conditions of approval. Um, I I will add that the applicant um has addressed some of the uh conditions of approval um in the last uh month or so, so we're we've been working with them to um complete that process. Um, but they're requesting some additional time um to make that possible. And I believe that extension would be until uh June thirtieth. So currently the deadline is May thirty first um that the planning commission uh previously approved. Um, I believe uh back in January or February. Um, Mr. Myers, would you like to uh add some additional information?
Sure. Good evening. Um, we are very, very.
Did you just kind of state your name?
Sure.
And your um street address, street or street?
Um, residence?
Residence.
Okay. Um, Brian Myers and three thirteen Clover Avenue Lancaster, PA. Address. Um, we are very, very close and actually anticipate being able to hopefully have everything done here by the end of this month, uh which is when it is Dubai. But just to uh make sure that we complete everything on the on the list there, we wanted uh we just thought it'd be beneficial maybe to add add thirty days uh to the request, just to ensure that we're able to wrap it up. Um, as Douglas mentioned, we'd gotten a number of the things completed. Um, uh, the most pressing one would have been just the letter of credit, just to win. The project had a number of small units in it and found it difficult or challenging procuring financing. Um, a number of the lenders just didn't like the fact that the units were so small. And so and again, our our goal is to try to bring uh naturally occurring affordable housing, if possible, um into the city. And so having these small units, we think would bring a tremendous amount of value. And so um we have found a lender and we're very excited to move forward with that. And regardless, we are in a position now to be able to move forward, even if uh we don't quite have that completed. Um, we should be able to produce the funds ourselves um just to to make sure that we're we're there. So again, we think we'll have it done by the end of this month. But just as a precautionary measure, we wanted to just ask for an additional thirty days in case we miss the deadline by a day or two.
Yeah, how many units?
Um, there's a total of sixty four residential units and two commercial spaces. And it there's two projects, two land development plans. The two properties are right next to one another. And so the one has thirty four and then the other one would have thirty uh residential units.
When you say small, is that one, two bedrooms?
Um, even less, so twenty nine of them are um what we'll call shared living, very high end shared living units, where everyone has their own bathroom, um about two hundred and fifty square feet. But then if you factor in the common area for those folks, because there'll be a nice large kitchen, dining room, laundry room, a study room, um and um that will encompass about three hundred and fifty units or three hundred and fifty square feet per unit. If you factor in the common area.
Yes, yeah, thank you.
Um, Mr. Chair, may I ask a few more questions, please?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Myers, I just want to better understand um where you're at in the process of meeting conditions of approval. So I I have the um the condition uh conditional letter of approval for um two twenty one uh up in front of me right now. Um, the first condition is that the stormwater design is approved by the Stormwater Bureau and reflected accurately on the plan um along with cost opinion, financial guarantee. Um, has your design team been in touch with the Stormwater Bureau to address these issues?
I believe Keith, our engineer, civil engineer, has been um working on that, at least that's that's my understanding.
Okay, um.
Light Heigl is the yeah engineering firm.
Sure. Um, I I uh I'll trust that's the case. I haven't um heard from them recently. Um, but I I know that there were a number of outstanding uh technical difficulties or technical challenges there and uh at least in what was shown on the plan, I think the conception, the concept we were uh we had approved. Um, there was also a need for a signed cross easement between the two lots to address the stormwater management facilities. Um, has that been drafted and recorded yet?
I believe so. I believe our attorney has done that.
Okay.
Not not sure about recorded, but um I believe that it was submitted.
Okay, so drafted.
Yeah.
Okay, can you please provide us a copy of that?
Sure.
Um, there's also a signed operations and maintenance agreement for the project, which um I don't believe we have uh received yet either. Am I correct about that?
I believe you are correct, and I believe our attorney has does have a draft in front of us for review.
Okay, you had mentioned um financial guarantee from the bank. Um, although I don't believe we have approved the cost estimate, which would determine the financial guarantee from the bank. So is it the financial guarantee or is it the financing from the project um that you received?
I think essentially we just need your approval on the cost estimate that was submitted from our uh from our civil.
Okay. Um, there's also a tree easement um on Market Street that uh needs to be signed and recorded. Um, has there been any headway on that?
I'm not sure. I can ask our civil. I Benjamin typically, my brother and business partner typically handles all this stuff, so unfortunately he was not able to attend tonight.
Okay.
But it is my understanding that that is also all all the items on there are are in motion.
Okay, and that would also include a sidewalk easement agreement as well. Um, an access easement between the two properties and then a final um developers agreement um that is executed. That's that's just for the two twenty one North Prince Street property. There's a similar list for the two twenty seven North Prince Street property. Um, uh, to to be honest, this is still quite a long list of conditions that remain unaddressed um nearly a year and a half after the plan was approved. Um, the Planning Bureau is willing to recommend the extension that you have requested um going forward. I'm not sure that that's going to be the case. Um, the reason for that is since this plan was approved, um we have changed ordinances and changed protocols. And uh every time that happens, it's an opportunity to improve the plans uh that come before us. Um, and there comes a point where we may want those new um those new standards that we've adopted to be applied to the development plan. Um, we're supportive of this project. I think the housing is uh is good for the city. Um, and uh it is a unique concept that we've been interested to to see, the co-housing uh that you've proposed. Um, so uh with with that, I hope to continue working with you in earnest on addressing these outstanding conditions. Um, and the the Planning Bureau will um for now uh recommend a time extension as requested.
So we need to take a vote on that?
Yes. Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Hold on one second. Could I ask a question too?
Sure.
I just want to make sure I understand um and before I ask a question, I I want I want to say I appreciate how creative your team gets, like your projects are kind of mind blowing to see because you seem to be some of the only people doing them. Um, but that aside, can you, just to make sure, so is a shared living unit then, is it like a two hundred and fifty square foot? Like sleeping space and bathroom and then you're accounting that three hundred and fifty for like each associated room?
Yeah, that's correct. So essentially, everyone will have their own room um and their own bathroom, that they'll be able to lock the door. They can probably put a mini fridge in there, a little microwave if they chose to do that. But then there'll be a nice, large um commercial grade kitchen. Um, a large living area, um a a large, actually a walk-in refrigerator that everybody can kind of store their food if they'd like to do that. Um, large dining area. Um, so if you take the the additional, to go from two hundred and fifty, the additional hundred square feet essentially is that additional common area, just broken out by the twenty nine units, if that makes sense. So it's two hundred and fifty square feet if you're in your own unit locked. But then if you go out and um.
It's like another three hundred and fifty square feet then?
That's correct.
Okay. I think I follow you.
Not not an additional three hundred squ- additional one hundred square.
Additional one hundred, that's right.
So it's twenty nine hundred feet of common area? Is that correct?
Yes. Thank you.
Any other comments from the commission?
I do have a a question maybe. Would would six weeks be enough time? We're the extension here seems to be based more on what we're looking at for finances. But what about the punch list? What about the things that need to be done with the planning and meeting all those requirements? Can that realistically be done in six weeks?
I mean, it's my understanding that a lot of these items have um are are in motion. Um, I mean, if if you want to grant me a a longer time period, that certainly would be appreciated. But it's my understanding that we would be able to accomplish um this. I guess it would come down to how quickly we can make sure that we um not only submit the items, but are able to kind of work through uh with Douglas and his team. Just if they have comments and things like that on some of these items. So I don't know if you want to speak to that, Douglas?
Uh, Mr. Myers, I I want you to request the amount of time that you need to uh fulfill these requirements. Um, that is, uh, you know, the last time we had you before us, I believe it was for a one or two month extension. And we encouraged you to take additional time and we provided you that additional time. So um I don't know how long your team requires to make these amendments. Um, I think you should request whatever time you feel is needed to do that. And um and then let's work on satisfying those.
Yeah, so we, I mean, the 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 additional thirty days that we're asking for, we can produce all the items that have been requested of us. Now, whether they are have comments or need to be have changes from your team, I I don't know how how. In other words, I'm not sure how quickly that turnaround would would be, but we can, I mean, our our goal is to have everything to you here in the next seven days, give or take.
The the item on the items on there that um give me the most pause are uh the stormwater plans being accurately reflected to the Bureau's uh um standards and the opinion of probable costs being reviewed by um the various staff that need to comment on that and then providing that back to you. Um, and the financial guarantee would still need to be provided to us from the bank or from uh a a bond company um before the plan could be recorded. So um, I mean, six weeks. Um, I won't say it's impossible. It 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 seems a a little bit ambitious. Um, I might err on the side of of eight weeks to give us a little bit of time there.
Yeah.
Um, but uh we also don't want to prolong um you know, this process indefinitely either.
No, I appreciate those comments, Douglas, for sure.
Mr. Polite, I wouldn't be opposed to suggesting an extension if that is in my place to say August thirty first, because that will give us one week before our September Planning Commission meeting and almost an entire summer to make sure those things are done properly and to the care that would take for coordination with the city.
Yeah.
I would not be opposed to making a motion to that, but I don't know if I'm in the place to just say that without it being brought to us. I will then.
Certainly, you can uh offer that as a recommendation.
May I do that then? I would, all right, I would like to make a motion to extend the final land development for two twenty one to two twenty seven North.
Before we do that, is there a comment from the public?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, and then we'll we'll make the motion.
Okay.
Any comment from the public on this project? Okay, hearing none. Um, we'll put a motion on the floor.
Mm hmm.
All right. I would like to make a motion to extend the final land development for two twenty one to two twenty seven North Prince Street to August thirty first, twenty twenty two, to give enough adequate time to prepare and coordinate with the city.
Thank you, sir.
I'm seconding that.
I'm going to second.
Do we have a second? Oh, I didn't hear. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to extend until August the thirty first, twenty twenty two. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose? Eyes have it? Motion carried?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mr. Myers.
Douglas, I hate to mention procedure right now. We just talked about this before, because Maxine's here now, what are we looking at for voting members for tonight?
Um, so this evening, it looks like we have um full-time members would be Mr. Whalen, um Ms. Cook, Mr. Nelson, uh, Mr. Hackett, and we would need one additional um alternative uh member to um to serve as a full-time member this evening to reach a quorum.
Okay.
Um, have either you, Mr. Tony Dastra, or uh Mr. Bain um been voting members previously?
Uh, one other time. I'm happy to let Mr. Dastra take tonight.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Dastra, you're up. Um, and uh.
I just wanted for legal reasons to.
Yes.
Sure, we have that all laid out.
Thank you. So uh did you both vote in the last action?
We did. We actually both like seconded as well, so if.
Okay, can we let the record reflect that Mr. Dastra uh seconded and uh and made the vote? Um, thank you for clarifying.
Mm hmm. Okay, moving forward. To be Willow Valley Communities Mosaic Final Lot Consolidation and Land Development Plan for seventeen West Vine Street. RNG Associates has submitted a final lot consolidation and land development plan for Willow Street uh Valley Community. Um, a new twenty-story building is proposed to replace the vacant building and to accommodate a hundred and forty-six inde- independent living apartment and annuity spaces for residents of Willow Valley Communities. This is an informal presentation without action.
Correct.
Good evening, Craig Smith with RGS Associates. And I'm here representing the uh Willow Valley Mosaic Project. Um, this plan has been through a preliminary land development plan. We were in front of the Planning Commission and received approval back in November. So uh the purpose of this meeting is really to bring you up to speed on where we're at now. We filed a final land development plan. We have been working closely with city staff on outstanding comments on the project. But what I'd like to do is just briefly remind or bring you back up to speed on what this project proposes. And kind of walking around the building, um, I'll start at the front entrance on Vine Street. So um thi- this is a twenty-story uh building that the first two floors are largely amenity spaces. Uh, there's a pool, locker rooms, ballroom, um retail space. Uh, there there's there's amenity spaces with the second level up to the north on Mifflin Street being essentially the back of house uh where you have trash removal and 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 that type of thing. But starting back on Vine Street, uh, the main entrance is proposes a a port of cashier for drop-off um in the front of the building. And by the way, this plan is almost identical to the preliminary plan with some exceptions that I'm going to point out. As you move west toward um Beaver Street and kind of around the corner, uh, we are proposing to improve Beaver Street right now. Um, Beaver Street is all impervious coverage. It's a paved alley essentially with a sidewalk and curbing. That will be removed. Um, there will be uh pavers that are put through, and this is going to be a public access that connects essentially Steiman Park all the way down to Southern Market. So it'll be a nice connected um walkway system for the public use. The section that goes across to the parking garage is an an overhead on the third floor uh connection. Thank you, Mendelley. Um, a connection for the parking garage. There are two hundred and fifty parking spaces allocated for Willow Valley residents and guests in that LMP parking garage. Um, as you had further north up to the corner of Mifflin, Mifflin Street will stay the same. It is a one-way street that heads to the east that connects to um Queen Street. And again, there is a an opening in the back. Uh, there's an indoor dock area, again, trash removal service is all proposed in this back section of the building. On the northeast corner, it's the historic Yates House is located. Obviously, we are saving that building and that will remain in its in its current condition. Um, as you come down Queen Street, there's what's called the Urban Plaza, and that is an outdoor uh plaza space. And by the way, one of the things to remember about uh this project is essentially Mifflin Street to the north and Vine Street to the south are at different elevations. So the Vine Street entrance is at one elevation, the Mifflin Street entrance is essentially a a story up. So there's some grading and some things we had to navigate through to make the the connections work. But the Urban Plaza is up on that kind of that second floor area. And as you work your way down Queen Street, um, takes you to the corner of of Queen and Vine, there's an outdoor space, uh, outdoor patio space that's proposed. Um, that's adjacent to a restaurant, so there's a there's a gathering area for food and gathering um in in that section uh of the plan. Um, stormwater management is largely by green roof, and you can see those areas. And again, we worked all all through this uh with the preliminary plan. There's also what's called constructed filters, which are essentially, I'll call them troughs, that are uh on the Beaver Street side that collect roof water. And so this is integrated into the stormwater design and and works together in that capacity. So a couple of things to point out um that's happened since the preliminary plan approval. There was some question about the ownership of Beaver Street and who owns that? The city does not own that. That was um that was cleared back in the seventies. The city's city vacated Beaver Street right away. We have been working with Willow Valley's legal team, with LMP, and we now know that the essentially the property line is in the center of Beaver Street. So technically, LMP owns the west side, Willow Valley owns the east. And verbally, we have been working with LMP. They have made some verbal commitments to provide the um needed easements for access through there, uh that will double as some maintenance easements for there to maintain their parking garage. So that's being worked out, obviously, before we record the plan. Um, we're gonna have to provide those agreements to the city and 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 go through that process. We did add bicycle parking. Uh, there is a a large storage of bicycle parking or bicycle storage within the building. However, close to the Urban Plaza to the northeast as well as, I'll call it the southwest corner at Vine Street, uh, there's a bus stop that's that's located there, so we did locate some additional bicycle parking um and bike racks. Um, we also located some some benches um as a part of that as well. And again, working with the city on on what that what that looks like. We did also add some pedestrian safety measures. Um, one to point out is up in Mifflin Street. On the north side, we actually are now proposing uh some stamped asphalt that's a different color that runs across that north side. And it's 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 a pretty narrow one-way alley, but we want a delineated pedestrian walkway. It's not shown on the rendering. The rendering was not updated, but you'll on the final plan, we are proposing correct, right along that north side, that we have pedestrian connections for for safety measure measure. And the idea is to keep pedestrians away from the entrances to a service area on the backside of the building. We also um in working with the city on the northeast corner by the Yates House are going to be proposing a curb bump out on that section. And what that will do is it'll make the crosswalk um shorter distance for pedestrian and further define that area, provide some traffic calming. I will say this is subject to PennDOT requirement or PennDOT approval, so um you know, we have worked with the city on the fact that we can record the plan prior to PennDOT approval, since this is kind of a last item. So it's subject to that. If for some reason PennDOT does not re or does not approve that, obviously, we can install it. But we're we're willing to to provide that measure. Similarly, down on Beaver Street and West Vine Street, down in that section right there, we propose a crosswalk on the south portion near um Southern Market. We also looked at a potential curb bump out on that section. And the city will see this in our next submittal. We're concerned about a turning movement from Beaver Street heading north, then going east that would prohibit that movement of a larger vehicle. We don't want to create a safety condition. So that's not going to be shown on the plan, but we did evaluate that. Um, we did also provide some similar detail or some more specific detail on some of these outdoor spaces, including the outdoor patio. So you can see, Mendelley, if you go back to the um uh the three D renderings, and this has not changed since the preliminary plan, you get an idea of kind of every side of the building. You can see the 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 different levels, where the twenty stories occurs. And again, the idea is that occurs back away from the streetscape. The 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 shorter building along Queen Street is really trying to bring that street down, streetscape down, so you don't have a vert- a large vertical element. And we discussed this with the zoning hearing board back when we got the zoning variance for the height. Um, and again, this this did not change, but it gives you an idea of kind of what that looks like. So again, we're working with the city. Our intent is to resubmit, address the comments, resubmit to the city by the end of next week. So hopefully, we're back in front of you here in June for a formal conditional approval, understanding that the agreements and things associated legally will need to be worked out before we record the plan. So that's where we're at. I'd be glad to answer any questions from the Planning Commissioner, from staff um on anything else.
Yes, I have a question. Um, I remember the last time that we also talked about lighting. Was there, is there any additions to that on the Beaver Street or?
Yes, there's there's a lighting plan that's now provided, and actually, we're updating per the city's recent comments. That'll be provided next week at the end of the week. So that the the lighting has been evaluated.
Thank you.
Yep.
Can you repeat about the the walkway on Mifflin Street again?
Sure, so the right now it's. So right now, it's standard pavement.
Right.
That's going to be milled. There's going to be a new paved pavement layer put on. As a part of that, there's going to be stamped asphalt on the north side, similar to Christian Street, if you're familiar with that, where you have a walkway that's a different color. And it's just helped to identify where pedestrians should be walking. So although we're not creating a sidewalk per se, we're creating a pedestrian walkway that helps differentiate between the vehicle and the pedestrian traffic for safety.
Got it. Thank you. Any other questions from the commission?
I have one. The current Steiman Building, and I didn't catch this before, and I can't really recall the condition, but the current Steiman Newspaper Building, does that abut the Yates House directly? Do they share a wall?
It does.
So will there be improvements to the Yates House, repointing and new masonry as a part of this project?
Yeah, there's going to have to be some work done to it, yes. Because of the separation that has to occur. But the point about the saving the Yates House, you know, the facade that's out there, that's not those sides will be maintained.
Sure. I just wanted to clarify that it was a part of the project.
It's not a standalone building. It will have to be severed.
Okay. And then on West Beaver, I know you have the Urban Oasis. It looks like there's a cutout in the footprint. It's like a big white area. What is that intended to be?
There are a lot of utilities in Beaver Street. Electric, I think there's gas that may or may not be active. There's some sewer that we're going to replace. A lot of what's happening on that north side is electrical duct banks and can't be moved because of power situation. So there's grates and things that we can't really change as a part of this project.
Okay, so they would, more or less, surface level things, pedestrians be able to pass right by?
Yes, yeah. Right now, if you walk out there now, it's metal grating.
Right.
And it's concrete, it's vaults underneath that supports the electrical system. A lot of that's going to have to be maintained.
Sure. Thank you.
Yeah, I would love to hear more about these amenity spaces and the extent to which the public can access them. It, you know, I want to hear more because like when I read that there's going to be a library, for instance, I think about how this is in a very walkable part of town. And I feel like that's part of the intention with this proposal is that it was put here because it's in a walkable downtown area. We're constructing a new public library right now. And I feel like there's a lot here. And I understand that there's aspects of wellness that need to be maintained for some residents with limited mobility. But it doesn't feel like a total integration with the city fabric. So could you detail more about how the public will be able to use these spaces?
Sure, yeah. And again, it is a retirement community. So it is, it has to be a secure space. But the Urban Plaza that's shown along Queen Street, the building area behind that, there's some retail components to it. So that's publicly accessible, that urban space. And you can see the steps there act as kind of an entrance to that. And then if you go a little bit further north, there's a ramp configuration that provides accessible, an accessible route to that Urban Plaza. And then down on Vine Street, there's an outdoor patio space. And again, there's a restaurant that's affiliated to that. So the public could access that. That will be, you know, there is a fence that's a part of that. Again, for security purposes, depending on when that is during the day, because it's part of a retirement community. But again, that's accessible.
What do you, I mean, I don't fully understand these security concerns. Could you explain more about that?
Well, anytime you have, especially retirement community, it's just that they have to, there's security measures that have to be taken into account as of any place. But these are, you know, residents that pay to live in this community that, you know, they have to be in a secure environment.
I'm still not fully understanding. The reason why I'm asking is because how I feel is it's almost an indication that the city isn't safe. And that's what, like, that's why I'm asking, like, what the security concerns are and like where the public can actually integrate more aptly with the residents that will be here. Because my concern is that if there's not a proper flow of people in through this facility, understanding that there are residencies, like, obviously, I wouldn't want somebody just walking up like, "Hey, I'm here. What's for dinner?" But I want to make sure that the residents that would be here are able to get familiar with the residents that are here and that it's a proper connection. So it's not the Willow Valley community in Lancaster City and the Lancaster City community around it.
Understood. COVID, for instance, I mean, retirement community shut down was an example. So there needs to be, like you said, third floor and up are all private residences. So you can't have access to every part of the building. I do not know Willow Valley's, all the logistics associated with security, but there needs to be security there. So that's part of, you know, what you are, where you are living to have a safe environment. I can't speak to the interaction that's somewhat dependent on the resident and how much the interaction they want to have. But obviously, there's opportunity for all of that to happen. There's outdoor spaces, the walkways, the connections to public spaces in the city, up to Steiman Park. I mean, that's up to the individual, how that happens.
Are the spaces fenced in any way?
This space?
This, your Urban Plaza and the other, I don't know, I can't read it, but the one down?
I know the outdoor one is fenced.
Okay.
And that's for security, depending on time of day, time of night, whatever. There's a secure, there's an entrance gate that's right off of Vine Street. Yep. And, you know, a certain point in time, that would be closed. So we don't have, you know, a security issue.
I definitely understand that there needs to be security, especially for the third floors and up. So the public wouldn't have access to things like this pool and spa, library, ballroom. It's just the retail spaces, like literally just the retail on the Queen Street side and the restaurant?
So again, I don't know all the logistics of what, for instance, the pool, it's not a public pool. It's a pool for the residents. So there are pool and spa and things associated with that is for the residents. The ballroom may be used for an event, depending on how they schedule that. The restaurant may be accessed by the public. The retail may be accessed by the public. But not every space, not even on the first floor, is accessible by anyone from the public. That's a result of the retirement community.
Yeah, like, I think that's one of, I think that's what concerns me the most is, and I understand you're not, you're doing what has been asked of you. I feel like especially right now, it may seem little to mention how a pool is not accessible to the public. But currently, we're in our own community, the county pool can't open because we don't have the staff for it. And so it seems like this is a great opportunity for this institution, if you will, to actually be able to provide those amenities that we are struggling to secure for the public right now.
There's 146 residents that occupy the building, so.
Mr. Chair, if I may. I think, you know, you hear loud and clear, there's some questions about, you know, some identification of needs in the community. And in each development, we have a limited sort of ability to address those through private development. You know, in this case, you know, the Land Development Code cannot require a pool access from the public. I certainly hear your concern, Mr. Dastra. I will note that there are a number of ways that this development does, I think, interact well with the streetscape surrounding it, which is really our primary objective in land development is to make sure that there are recreational facilities being provided for the residents that are creating a new impact in the community. Those recreational facilities can be provided privately in a development, according to our current Land Development Code. That could be a future revision that the commission entertains. Certainly, in our conference of plan, we'll be evaluating the recreational requirements that we have. So in this case, there's a very heavily amenitized community that's being proposed. All of the recreational requirements are being provided and exceeded for those residents. At the street level, certainly, there is retail opportunity that's being added on Queen Street. A restaurant that will be, as I understand, available to the public to be eating at at the ground level. And I think some thoughtful design in terms of street furniture and other streetscape elements that are being included here. So I'm just trying to sort of direct us back to the task at hand. And that is, you know, what we vote on in the Land Development Code. But I note the concerns, Mr. Dastra. And I think that we can continue to explore those in some policy discussions.
Yeah, and I apologize for just sort of like boom, boom, boom. This is my first time
That's okay.
up here as a commissioner. And I've been following along with the project. I just, you know, I feel like there's a level of concern and it's a huge opportunity. This is the last question I have. And it's only because I am uncertain. And if you can't answer it, it's fine. I've gotten mixed information, not from Willow Valley or anything, just from the public. Property taxes are going to be paid on this, correct? Like, after the development's done, it's a taxable property, correct?
I do not know that.
It is? Okay. Thank you.
I'm just a little confused about the bottom right-hand corner of the picture we're looking at right now. Can we get the 3D rendering of that? I'm just trying to see, like, if on a street level, what kind of through site there is. And like, I understand it's fenced. It looks like that area is more for like a filtration into the restaurant. I'm just kind of curious what that would look like on a...
Yeah, so you can see in the corner, and I will say, these 3D images are not up to date.
So is that like a wall or a fence or, I mean, is there going to be through site?
There's a gate in the front.
Sure.
There's a gate in front. And there's essentially going to be a pergola-type structure that you kind of walk through.
Sure.
There's a sitting area.
But I mean, outside of the gate, what is the structure that's fencing in? Is it a wall? Is it a fence?
It's a fence.
Okay, so you can see through it. And you have some visualization.
There's some planter walls that go along with it too. And again, some designer refinement has happened as a part of it. But that's all been kind of.
I was trying to visualize what that looked like as you're walking down Vine Street, making a left on the Queen.
Yeah, and one of the things, again, the grade that happens as you're walking up Queen Street, there's some planters that happen on the left-hand side as you're walking up. So we're looking at grades and some, you know, short walls that are part of that. So that's all integrated into the space. But it's a gathering area.
Mr. Smith, what percent would you say that courtyard is in terms of design? I know there's always generally more refined design that happens after the land development plan in terms of, you know, fine-scale landscaping and such. I'm just sort of curious what we're seeing here versus what will be installed. Can you help us understand that a little bit better?
What you're seeing on the final plan is very close. Again, the rendering was not updated. But what you're going to see on the final plan or have seen as a part of that, and we provided some landscape details, there were some landscape comments that we are addressing. Actually, another firm is looking at those landscape specifics. We're going to provide that to you next Friday.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other comments from the commission? Any public comments? Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith. We appreciate your time.
Thank you for your time.
Item C. Hagan Group and LGH. Final land development plan for Queen and Frederick Streets. Mixed use at 550 North Queen Street and 547 North Prince Street. And a request for modification to Soto Street Trees. ELA Incorporated has submitted a final land development plan for Hagan's Groups and LGH's project. The final plan includes a lot consolidation plan to combine nine existing parcels into two large lots. The project includes the following. A three-story, 32,833 SF medical building, a parking garage, and a four-by-five-story residential and commercial mixed-use building with 244 residential units with ground floor restaurant and retail space. Yes. Would you state your name, please?
Good evening. Neil Fisher with the Hagan Group. Is that too close?
Fisher?
Fisher. I think he did a great job summarizing. Are we ready to go home? I'm kidding, okay. Now, listen, this project, we've been working on this project for about three years now with Lancaster General Health, with the city, and really trying to plan a community that's going to benefit the entire area. We started off about three years ago with a rezoning application. The project was current, used to be zoned hospital complex in R2. We worked with the city to rezone that to mixed use. Then over the past, after we achieved that, then we really got into the planning stages of it. We did receive preliminary plan approval, recommend, or approval a few months back. And really, what I'd like to do is just kind of recap the high points of the plan and then go into, we can talk about the finer points that we've been refining with city staff over the past several months. Mendelley, could I ask you to pull up the presentation for the Planning Commission? So the site is located, it's three and a half acres. It's located between Queen Street, Frederick Street, and Prince Street. Market Street bisects the center of the site. So over on the west or the left-hand side of the screen, that's the stadium. And on the east or the right-hand side of the screen, that's the seven-story parking garage that's associated with the Lancaster Hospital. And then as you continue going further east, the hospital expands, it grows, and their main facility is over there. The hospital had a goal of expanding their facility, bringing urgent care into this location. But they wanted to be part of an area that had other uses associated with it. So we planned for additional buildings, residential buildings, some retail, some restaurant space. We've also worked diligently with the Historic Commission. So I could ask you to back up just to the slide. There are three existing buildings on this site. The three, or sorry, there are four. The three in green are contributing resources. The one that's that yellowish-orange, the long, yes, that's a non-contributing resource. So we are within the historic district of the city. So we spent a lot of time and energy with the Historic Commission to come up with a plan that was desirable from their standpoint and from ours. So you can see the two up at the intersection of Prince and Frederick Streets. That's where there's a tavern and a carriage house. Those two structures were extremely important to the commission. They're to remain, be adaptively reused. So start with the tavern. And I'll just kind of work around the property and talk about the uses within the buildings. At the tavern, it's right at the corner there of Prince and Frederick. The first floor, we do believe it's important for there to be retail space. Back, it used to be retail years ago. It's been vacant for a long time. Bring that back to that corner. It's certainly, it fronts out towards the stadium and some of your commercial districts. It's approximately 1,800 square feet on that first floor. The second floor would be residential, two residential units above there. The tavern building that is then adjacent to that, the first floor is basically a garage today. We would utilize that space for maintenance for the rest of the community. And then the second floor would have two additional apartments above that. Also, in that first floor, you can kind of see where that building is located. It backs towards where our courtyard is for that western building. That will be, there will be some amenity spaces in there so that people who are... That will be, there will be some amenity spaces in there so that people who are utilizing the pool could go over there if they needed a restroom or, or things of that nature. There'll, there'll be space contained within the tavern, or sorry, the carriage house for that. We designed a, a multifamily building then that wraps around the historic structures. And if you notice, it's thinner on the southern edge than it is on the two wings. The reason for that is that the PPL substation is located south of the property. So that thinner portion of the building does not have units that front and look out towards the substation. Everybody has a great view, whether you're looking into the courtyard or you're looking out onto the streetscapes. And then, then there's Market Street. And then on the eastern side, we have a mixed-use building. That mixed-use building, the, the corner of Frederick and Queen, that's where restaurant space would be located. We have approximately 4,500 square feet allocated for a restaurant there. And then the intersection of Queen Street and our driveway that goes back towards the parking garage, we also have that corner of the building. Yes. We have approximately 4,500 square feet that would be allocated towards retail. It could be, it could be a coffee shop, it could be a pharmacy, something that's associated with the medical uses next door. I think the opportunities are endless, right? There's a lot of, lot of opportunities, but the smaller shops is, that's the type of facility that we could see within that location. It'd be great to see a small grocery-type of facility, a small, like a family-owned business. We have, we have some of them in, in other communities that have been extremely successful. Hard to find, but great. And then above, on the upper floors, we would also have, that's where the residential. So that's the five-story building. The western building is a four-story building. It's a four-story because of the historic nature of the buildings and not for the building to overpower the historic buildings. The eastern building's a five-story. As I said, the first floor is a mix of residential, retail, and we also have our, our community space. So our community space is located along Queen Street also. It really is the connection between the restaurant and the retail. So the space that's not allocated for one of those two uses, the rest of that goes towards our community space for the residents. So if you continue down, just, we continue down south of our drop-off area, or the driveway, that's where the medical office building. It's a three-story building. And then the parking garage is, the parking garage serves this entire development. Okay? So this plan here, I'll dive into a little bit more detail, really on a couple of components that, that we've been refining. We talked about the historic. One of the things that, 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 between the historic, the tavern and the carriage house, you can see that there's a space in between there. There, there's an, a very small addition that was attached to that. It was an add-on feature to the tavern. That's something that was recommended and then approved for removal as part of this project. Pedestrian circulation was certainly something that we discussed a lot with staff. And if you look at the southern side of Lot 2 or the southern side of Lot 1, you can see that there's a sidewalk connection. There are sidewalks that, that, that wrap around the entire property, one because we have street frontage that wraps around our entire property. But in, in addition to that, getting people from Prince Street over to Market Street over to Queen Street and not have, I'll call them mid-block crossings in that manner, was very important to, to the city. So not only are the sidewalks being provided, but also easements, 10-foot-wide pedestrian easements that will be associated with that, with that southern property in favor of the city that makes that connection. Another thing that was certainly...
And that, that it still be room enough for cars to go?
Those mid-block crossings, so along the southern side, they're pedestrian crossings. These are going from, Mandelli, could you just highlight going across, say, Lot, the bottom of, part of Lot 2, so you can see the sidewalk area? Yes, right, yes. So that sidewalk that runs across the southern portion, it's only intended for pedestrians, for, get people to walk across. And same thing over on Lot 1. Now, we did have a lot of conversation about Market Street, and Market Street today is 14 feet wide. So, and you can see on the plan here, it shows 14 feet and then 19, and you can see this, this darker strip that's going in the north-south direction. And in, in a similar way to what the previous project was talking about, having a, a brick paver, this intermixing between, to obtain a wider cartway or a wider street. Way to achieve that is to accommodate this pedestrian path that comes down through the street where it is identified through pavement markings, through brick, through a brick pattern and color that runs down the street. It does two things. One, it provides for pedestrians to be able to walk in a safe, safe manner. It identifies a path. Two, it also takes a very narrow street and it provides flexibility for cars should they need to come, where they typically would have to pull off and wait for cars, and they'll still have to do the same thing, but they could make maneuvers, cars could get around each other in a safe manner as well. So it's a, that's a modification that has been made to the plan. So then I, what we've done is, we've also included some renderings as we go around the site. So this is an image of the tavern, and you can see the carriage house in the background and, and how the four-story residential building kind of wraps around and doesn't over, isn't overbearing as it relates to the, to the historic architecture. Here is the, this is the intersection of Frederick and Prince. So on the first floor, you can see the residential, or sorry, the, the restaurant area. We do have a, a fair amount of grade change coming down Queen Street. There's roughly seven feet, which is nice for the retail areas. It's gonna give a very nice tall ceiling, give some height in there. And then here's the intersection of our driveway that separates the medical office building from the mixed-use building, residential on the upper floors, retail space on that first floor. And then the next slide, this is our community space that looks out into the, our courtyard. We have courtyards associated on both the eastern and the western sides. And then the medical office building, three stories. So one other thing that I, I did want to highlight and point out is, along, along Frederick Street, around the historic buildings, there's an, because of the removal of the, that small portion that I mentioned that's attached, that appendage that's on the tavern building, and because of the gap that then is created between the new building and the car, or, yes, the carriage house, there's an opportunity for some art to be placed within there. The detail is right where the cursor is situated. That's the detail. And basically, it's a metal panel that is laser cut. And the detail doesn't really do it justice. We've, we have installed this on, and the, and the pattern is not identif, really, really configured out yet. But if you zoom back and you look at the picture, this is a, a project that we used this, this same idea to create separation between parking and some of our, our community space. And you can see the, the metal panel there, that's the same idea that we have for between the historic buildings and also between the historic building. And really, the idea is to form our streetscape along Frederick. So that's, that's high-level concept of our project, where it is, what we've been doing. So any questions you have? I'm here, I'm sorry. I failed to introduce John Lyons is here from the hospital and, and Cheryl Love from
I wanna, I actually want to bug you a little bit about, you mentioned grocery store in the future, potentially?
So there's all types of uses that are permitted in retail areas. We don't have a user for that space. I'm just giving you ideas of what could be...
Potentially down the line.
So this project, listen, my, my hope is to be breaking ground this summer, and it's a two-year build. So we have two years to really go out there and market and try to find the tenant, that tenant that can come into this area and, and make a successful business.
Gotcha. Um, thank you, and I actually want to thank you as well for the improvements you're making to Market Street. That, I think, is phenomenal. Is there, is there gonna be any retail on Market Street as well?
There's no retail on Market. We, what we, Market Street functions a lot like an alley.
Right, right.
The, the main streets being Prince and Queen Street. And so if you, you, if you're a retailer or a restaurant or, you know, a commercial, you wanna, you wanna be on those main streets where you have the greatest visibility and the greatest opportunities for success. So that's where we located those uses.
So I hope that, you know, even if it's small, I think it'd be a lovely idea to see a small retail space hidden back on Market Street, because even though it is not super visible, I think it could provide an opportunity for some of the residents, whether they're inside or outside of this complex, to congregate in a place that's not so car-heavy. But that said, I, I've in the past liked this project. I appreciate how much work you guys have gone through, and thank you.
Thank you. I would say, one of the things that, just to pick up on your comment, that I know that some of the planning staff has suggested to us would be opportunities to use Market Street for events. I, I'll say, for, for instance, a, I'll say a farmer's market. I know that you already have a farmer's market, so not to, just that, that type of event, events that could be utilized and to engage the public and bring them in and draw them into Market Street in some of those type of activities. Thank you.
I have a question related to the carriage house on the corner and then the building that surrounds it. The picture doesn't look so much like the building is, the newest, the newer building is flowing aesthetically with the carriage house. Will it remain just the way? Is that the intent?
That is the intent, yes.
Oh, okay. Okay, got it. Thank you.
And may I follow up on Maxine's comment? With the historic building with the tavern on the second floor, will the residential connections be through the new building to get to that?
No.
So it'll be a completely separate entrance?
So, the, the tavern today, which is the building directly on the corner there, the way it is, it, it used to function years ago was retail on that first floor and then residential above. So there are doors, there are doors that come down from the residential, and we'll continue, we'll keep those, maintain those for the second floor. And then the retail will, we're actually improving access to the retail areas. If you, this rendering is not 100% accurate. It shows the old stairs directly at the corner. We have to modify that for ADA accessibility. It will still, that door will remain stairs. The second door that's over on the right, that will become our ADA accessible door, where this shows a, a ramp, the ramp extending the full way across the front of the building. And the reason, just so you know, the reason we, we modified that was better pedestrian accessibility around, between the, between the streetscape, the trees, the bricks, and also having an accessible walkway and not pinching anywhere. So that was the reason for the modification to this rendering. But everybody will have, the second floor will have access through its own door, and the retail will have separate access.
When I think of neighborhood hubs and just how all this is coming together with the retail, restaurant spaces, and places that you aren't developing across the street, where we have restaurant and salons and different places there, too, it's really turning out to be a, I don't want to say hotspot, that just sounds so dated, but really, it's gonna be a great place to go. And with, with LGH maybe speaking to it, do we see a potential for the, more that healthy living idea when we're looking at potentials for clients that you'll be looking at to fill the retail spaces?
So I can expand on that, on the healthy living component a little bit. One, it was definitely a, a goal of not only LGH's but also ours, was to create a community that was geared towards healthy living. So it goes to the types of, so when you look at restaurant spaces, it goes to the type of restaurants that we're going to be marketing towards, right? We, we have another project down in Chester County, good life, that is Good Life Organics. I'll use them as an example. They, they use all organic food, they make smoothies, they make lunches, breakfasts, that types of things. The restaurant space on the corner, I, I see as more of a, an evening and lunch type of restaurant. It's larger, it's a bigger space, but still, our idea is that we would like to gear it towards healthy eating, right? Same goes for, you know, maybe a better location for, say, a Good Life Organics or a smoothie-type restaurant would perhaps maybe be the tavern building, right? It's a smaller space and more in line with the sizing from that standpoint, and accessibility standpoint, quite frankly. Our amenity spaces are all geared towards a healthy lifestyle. We have, we, we've had conversations with Lancaster General Health and are continuing those conversations as it relates towards education. As, you know, specifically, you know, so there may be opportunities for programs that they could come over, whether it's training or some, something along those natures that could be part of our community. All that, those are details that are, all would need to be worked out and refined, but the goal of the healthy lifestyle is definitely a goal of ours.
And if, if I may, one last question about, this will be about walkability. Everything, I mean, you know, this is a perfectly walkable location. Access to Red Rose transit routes, right across the street, actually, from one of their commuter lots, really, if you think about it. Is there any partnership to, because it's in the middle, you can't really put a bus stop on your property because it wouldn't make any sense, but is there any shelter options on either side?
Cheryl can correct me if I'm wrong, because I know Cheryl's, works with your transportation groups. But I believe there's a bus stop on the opposite side of Queen Street. Am I right about that, Cheryl?
There is, on Prince at least, I think, right?
I am on the transit board as well. I wouldn't say I'm an expert by any means, but...
You can just state your name for the record.
I'm sorry, Cheryl Love with ELA Group. So besides the land planning, I am on the board, but I believe there is a stop, although we don't, there's no shelter, at the northeast corner of Queen and, I'm sorry, the north, southeast corner of Queen and Frederick. So immediately across from the restaurant on that corner, there is, there is a, a bus location that is designated for picking up, which is directly across the corner from us.
One thing that we have been blessed with on this project is, so when you think about it from a public transit standpoint, the bus stops are on the opposite sides of the street, and we've been blessed with the utility lines, both in the north and south direction, right? So the bus, if there's, right, if you think about, if you're on Queen Street, it's one way in the north direction, so where the bus stop is gonna be is on the opposite side of the street. If you're on Prince Street, where the bus stop is gonna be, it's gonna be on the opposite side of the street, and we have the utility lines. One other thing to... One other thing, um, to, as it relates to the healthy living, we are designing our building for LEED, for LEED. I don't know exactly what level we're going to achieve yet, but it's, it's been a company philosophy for us for about 15 years now and, uh, every bill, every project that we've built has been, has, has achieved some level of LEED certification.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes. Where, where is the entryway to these residential spots? Are they on the outside access to the streets or?
So it's, these are corridor buildings, meaning that within the building, there's a common corridor that runs around and that's how you access your units. So on Market Street, if you see the middle crosswalk?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's one access point. On Prince Street, if you, uh, is this a plan set, Mandali? If you, could I get you to jump to, we actually have them highlighted on a, I think it's, oh, this is, uh, this is actually my presentation. Do you have the plan set by chance? Yes. Okay, so.
I have it here.
Here, I can, I can describe them to you. You, you can go to, uh, that's, that's fine. Um, so on, on Market Street, it's where the crosswalk is. If you go for the western building, that's an access point. There's also an access point on Prince Street that is located right near the street light. If you, uh, on the left side, on Prince Street. Uh, Prince, all the way over to the left.
To the left.
Up, that, right, uh, there you can actually see the door, right there. Yeah, there it is. So those are the, we have, those are the main access points for the project. We have other access points. If you look, uh, on the southern edge of the building, southeast corner, uh, there's access that comes out for, that's gonna be primarily for utilities and for trash. Do you, okay. And then for the, for the mixed-use building or on the eastern side of, of Market Street, you can, that's access that's going into the garage, right where the cursor is. You can see there's a door there. There's, there's multiple access points that go into the garage. There's also, that's a, that's an access into a trash room and, but if you go just north of there, on the opposite side of the, right there, there's a door that's there and that goes into the residential portion of the building. If you continue, if we go up to Frederick Street, you can, Frederick, well, yeah, that's just a, that's just a access into the courtyard. And then go towards the east, almost to, just right there. So that's an access also that goes into the residential portions, into that common corridor. And then just to the right of that, you, that whole area is access into the restaurant. There's, there's a door that's kind of for service and then there's the main access point that's right at the intersection. And as you come south then on Queen Street, yeah, so those door, the doors that you just wrapped around, those are retail doors. That one's a access into a lobby area for the residential. And then there's a door on Queen Street just north of the, of the retail. And that also accesses the, the residential. That's a common, that's, that's actually a dual-purpose door. It accesses, you can come in that hallway, you could get into the, the retail, you could go into the community space, or you could go into the residential. There's opportunities for, for all of those different areas off of that door.
And one more thing, what are the price points for these units?
I'm sorry?
What are the price points?
So we have units, we have efficiency units all the way up to two-bedroom units. So I'd say our square footage ranges from 500 square feet to a little over 1,200 square feet. So I would, I would estimate that the rents are gonna be around $2 a square foot. So if it's an efficiency, it'll be around $1,000. If it's a two-bedroom, it's, it'll be $2,400, $2,500, depending on the, on the size. So there, there is a, we have a very wide range of unit mixes. We have one bedroom, we, efficiencies, one bedrooms, one bedrooms plus stands, two bedrooms, two, you know, so depending on, on the type of unit or any amount of space that a tenant is looking for, there's a wide, or a wide range of flexibility.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioner?
Uh, will you, is there gonna be any direct access from the garage into any of these buildings or will everybody be required to go to street level and then up into the?
There's direct access to the residential and to the medical office from the garage.
On what levels?
Multiple levels. So the park, or the medical office is, is a three-story, uh, building. There is a, an elevator that goes, um, up to that level and, and services the medical office building within the parking garage. And for the, the residential, uh, there are, there's, there's an elevator directly inside the residential building that has direct access to the parking garage.
So you could park on the third level, for example, and walk to your office on the third floor of the medical office building, directly?
No, and, and here's why. You, you, the, that's not the way that the hospital wants the, that office, that building to function. They want people who are parking that are going to, in the parking garage that are going into the medical office building to go to the first floor. So they will not have the ability to walk through or, or to a specific level. They will, if they are in the parking garage and they're, they're going to the medical office, they'll be obligated to go to that first floor to their lobby area and then be directed to where to go.
Actually, since we have brought up the parking garage, you know, and this is not any, like, offense to you guys, I'm just not a, a huge fan of how we do parking garages as a whole. Um, I know this is a slanted deck garage, correct? And, um, I wish that that were not the case, however, it is the case. Um, is there any inclination, though, for this garage to be, um, built with steel construction so that height can be added later?
It is concrete construction.
Just concrete?
It is.
Okay.
Any other questions, Commissioner?
I just wanna make a comment that I'm, I'm just disappointed that there's not any affordable housing, um, being considered for these, how many, uh, units, 244?
Four.
Yeah, I'm just disappointed that there's not any affordable housing concerns, um, being addressed with this. That's all.
I, understood. I believe that there are multiple ways to address affordable housing, right? There are, one way is through building density so that you have supply. Another way is through a variety of unit types that supply a, you know, different options for different, different income levels, both of which this project is achieving. The, the affordable component that I believe that you're referring to, there are state programs that, that are out there that, to achieve that, this project is not suitable to fit those state programs. And without that public money, it's not an option.
I'm gonna take a, I'm gonna take a turn if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Smith.
And I can, uh, let's see, I, I wanna move towards talking about the conditions of approval, um, and the modification request. Um, but first, I, I just thought, um, well, first, I, I'll say to Ms. Cook's point, um, that affordable housing and providing housing for all of our residents just, uh, remains such a high priority of ours. And I know we've discussed that at, at length. Um, so, uh, certainly that, that, uh, comment's not, not lost on me and, and others here.
It's not lost, just so you know, it's not lost on me either.
Certainly.
I think affordable housing is something that is even more important today.
Yeah.
Especially with the inflation that we're all being forced to, you know, that we're all dealing with. It's not for every project, is, is my point.
Yeah, and the, the, the supply need is great at all levels. Um, and, uh, the recent housing study that we had done, you know, reinforces that too, that, I mean, you know, we don't just need affordable housing, we need all housing. Um, certainly, you're providing a lot of it. This is, um, I think, the largest project to date that we will have approved, certainly in my time. It's really significant. Uh, I wanted to just take a moment to take stock of some of the, uh, highlights or, or some of the wins that, um, that I'm, I'm noting in this project. And first, just start by saying, uh, uh, LGH, you did a, a fine job picking a developer. Um, I, you know, it certainly hasn't been an entirely smooth ride, um, but I have really appreciated the collaborative nature, um, of this particular relationship and, uh, wanna commend, um, Hank in in particular for, uh, for, yep, going along with us and all of our questions, concerns, et cetera. Um, the historic preservation element, um, I think really has made this development very special. Um, so, um, thank you for, uh, being open-minded about that. Um, and I think that the way that you scaled that building, um, the new building adjacent to it, um, really helps to, um, defer a bit to the historical context and, and, uh, just positions the development very well, I think, in the city fabric. I hope other developers, um, take note of that and, and do something similar. You went above and beyond on stormwater management. Um, you're, uh, close to managing in some way 100% of all of the water that we wanted to have you manage. And that was with shifting expectation about halfway through the development. And, um, so the developer agreed graciously to increase the stormwater management facilities on the project because our perspective internally had shifted on our ordinance and our interpretation of it, and it became stricter. So I commend you on that. You also redesigned the right-of-way on North Market Street, um, which, uh, actually is, is not entirely in line with our subdivision and land development code. And there's, um, there's probably more that we should've added to the modification list, but, um, you know, this is clearly being endorsed by staff and this was done willingly and we were, we're willing to waive those modification, um, fees because, uh, they redesigned the North Market, um, streetscape to ensure that it remained two-way, um, and was as pedestrian-friendly, um, as possible. Um, and we were using Central Market as one of our guideposts for how we were doing that. The housing contribution I mentioned, um, commend you on achieving or shooting for LEED at whatever, um, level you, you get that. Uh, you'll be, uh, at the moment, I can't think of any other privately funded building that has, uh, achieved LEED certification in the city. Uh, I know this building has, I know school district buildings have, um, correct me if I'm wrong, anyone, but I, I've been wanting to see more LEED buildings and you guys are doing that, so. And then, uh, I will say just design excellence overall. I think the building and the streetscape is designed really well. Um, despite not representing the ADA ramp, uh, precisely, I was extremely processed, uh, extremely impressed that you updated all of your renderings to be nearly exactly in accordance with the land development plan. That is incredibly rare that people develop them, pass the historical commission, uh, stage and even included the, um, electrical wires. So it truly is a, a very well-represented, um, rendering. Uh, and I think that this project overall just gives a lot of momentum for investment in the midtown, uh, area, um, towards the train station, which, uh, from a planning perspective, we're, we're very excited about. So, um, okay, so with all of that, I'll move towards, um, some of the recommended conditions of approval. And there are some things I wanted to suggest we, um, change and, and address. Some of these are, are just, um, very standard. Um, the developer shall secure the MPDS approval, um, for stormwater. The developer shall execute, um, the stormwater O&amp;M agreement and also the stormwater easement agreement. Going forward, we're needing to do both of those, um, per our legal counsel guidance. The fourth one, I wanted to suggest that we scratch. Um, the developer shall secure the highway occupancy permit approval. This is, um, an approval given by the state. Uh, typically, our plans aren't conditioned on them because you're submitting on a much longer timeline with the state and they're per our approved plans that you're asking for those permits. Um, if there are any amendments that PennDOT recommends, which is probably very unlikely, then we can deal with that through a plan amendment if, if needed. Um, but what I don't wanna do is hold you up from recording the plan, um, to secure those permits, um, when you can be submitting those and getting that moving. So that would be number, condition number four I'm recommending we scratch. So the fifth one, um, self-explanatory, the developer shall record all the sheets of the final land development plan, all the required easement agreements and provide evidence of recordation. Um, there are a lot of easement agreements in this, they're all documented well on the plan. Uh, you know that you have to go to city council for the right-of-way encroachments for the balconies and the architectural, um, features that protrude from the building. Um, I don't think there are any concerns, um, there. Six, the developer shall submit a construction guarantee. Um, straightforward. Number seven, um, the developer shall address staff review comments to the city's satisfaction per the April 25th review letter. Do you have any questions or concerns about that? Do we need to review any of the comments contained in that letter?
I'm confident that we can work it out.
Okay. The last one on here is the developer shall provide a community benefit survey. I think you've had that, you're familiar with that at this point. Okay, so that leaves, uh, a couple of other items here. So I wanted to first just walk through, um, the preliminary conditions of approval. Um, there were a couple I just wanted to make sure that we were meeting. You have street numbers and addresses assigned from the city engineer, right?
Correct. Uh, just Douglas says, number one, we have that as well. We have, we do have.
The MPDS approval?
It's, it's done.
Okay, okay.
So that could be.
Then we can scratch that too, uh, from, from the list as well. Let's see. Um, you did get shade tree commission approval, right? I believe, okay.
Correct.
Did you end up, uh, providing any outdoor bicycle parking facilities in the right-of-way?
Yes.
Okay, you did, yes.
Primarily at the restaurant areas.
Okay. Um, so one of the other conditions of preliminary plan approval is the developer shall present a couple of general opportunities for incorporating public art. Um, I, I appreciate that you already had an idea that you jumped on and you had, um, that you were, uh, open to doing that. There's one other, uh, fairly prominent gate that's on Market Street that residents will be passing by that looks into the larger courtyard. Um, and I'm wondering if that too might be an opportunity there. I, um, that gate, I, I think will be fairly, you know, visible as people walk up and down the street and didn't know whether you, you had given additional thought to how to design that area.
I can take a look at that.
Okay. I know there's some screening that needs to be done around, uh, surface utility things.
We have transformers that are going in there, so you can see the transformer, there, there's, and then the, the two E's are also electrical equipment. So I.
How much of that will actually be gate? Will all of that be?
No, so the idea is that where you see the sidewalk, so it's, it's more than just the sidewalk, this is also access for the utility companies to get in there. So you can see that there's, um, uh, pavers, probably the paver is adjacent to the sidewalk so that we're providing a wider surface area for, for vehicles to service the equipment. The gate is only at the sidewalk, it's, and then it's a fence. The idea was a, a black aluminum fence within that area.
So does it stretch from the building past, north of the transformers?
Yep.
And then it, it looks like it cuts in? And then it looks like it cuts in closer to the street there?
It goes building to building.
Okay, it does go building to building. So I'm just, I note that because that's a much larger fence and probably will be seen by many more pedestrians than the Frederick Street side. I like that the Frederick Street side certainly complements the pool use and the residents will be using that space too. This, although maybe screened more from the courtyard, users will be a lot more public-facing for pedestrians and others using the Market Street corridor. So there's a lot of aesthetic value, I think, for the community on this side. I would encourage you to look at that. I mean, it's... I don't think it needs to be a condition of approval, but if you can find a way of enhancing that maybe beyond just a black aluminum fence, I think that that would do a lot for the streetscape.
So let's leave it as we'll take a look at it. There may be a way to integrate portions. It's a pretty long fence and...
And it could just be on the entryway?
Right.
Is there landscaping? There's no landscaping in front of the gate portion that's set back from the...
Correct.
Okay. Is that sidewalk there?
That it. So, no, that's the, that goes, the dark path is the brick, is the brick...
Stamped asphalt.
Stamped asphalt.
Yeah, and then to the right of that...
Is grass.
Is grass. So there could be shrubs or landscaping there as well, if possible, with the utilities that would help to soften just the black aluminum fence and add a little bit more texture. That's another way to go. I'm just, I think that area stands to be improved from a pedestrian aesthetics standpoint.
So either from landscaping, fencing, combination thereof?
Yes. It could be that the decorative fence is only at the entryway or that you add shrubs along the remainder of the fence. There's nothing really beautiful that people want to look at with the utilities right on the other side of the fence, so it's actually, I think, screening there would be nice and it would screen the utilities as well as provide some aesthetics.
So we did, we did put in, I believe we have a note on our plan that states that the landscaping associated with courtyard would be submitted under a separate application. We could have that, this, I mean, really, this is part of our, this is an entrance to our courtyard area.
Yeah, sure. That makes sense to me. Appreciate you considering that. So the native, sorry, the landscaping for the courtyard, I was going to suggest that we include in the final developer's agreement, since that's something that we would be looking at upon inspection. It would essentially say, you know, it'll reiterate the note that you already have on the plan and then say that, you know, the financial release, which we estimated just for grass right now because that's not designed, would be released based on, you know, that native plants were actually installed on inspection. And we could include this portion as well being landscaped per our standard ordinances.
I think that sounds great.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Let me see. Okay, the last issue that I had on, oh, well, actually, I won't say it's my last, hang on. I believe it is my last. Okay, so the last one is the street trees. So Neil, you and I started a conversation that I never got to get back to you on and finish, but I did have a meeting with staff and I wanted to, just for the commission's benefit, walk through some numbers. So the preliminary plan conditions of approval said that the developer shall make a payment in lieu of planting 16 trees. We took a close look at the numbers for tree replacement. And here's what we came up with, because it's slightly different than what's on the plan, so I want to kind of explain this to you. So the land development code says that if a tree is six inches or larger, it's considered a landmark tree and should be replaced inch for inch with two-and-a-half inch trees. So if you total that up, there were three that the Shade Tree Commission ruled on, and I think two of them were above six inches. There was a maple and a locust on the Queen Street side that hung into the right-of-way at 19 inches and 13 inches. On, in the private property side, there were five trees that were all over six inches, and in total, that was 53 inches of DBH. If you add that all up, we basically have 34 replacement trees for those private property trees. In addition to that, there is a modification that's being requested for 10 street trees per the frontage calculations, which is shown on your plan accurately. So this is where it gets a little complicated. The three trees that the Shade Tree Commission ruled on are governed under the street trees ordinance under Public Works. Public Works has made a strong case to me in planning that we make a request for some payment in lieu of street trees. The three that they govern can be required to be replaced with a payment for the replacement value, the retail replacement value, which is, we estimate at about $250 per tree. The street trees that you're requesting modification of are under the planning commission purview. Planning Bureau is recommending that we grant the modification, which means payment in lieu of would not be required for those 10 trees. So then that leaves the private property trees, which total the 53 cumulative inches. At two-and-a-half inches, that means there's 21 trees that would be required. Those trees add a replacement value of $500, comes out to $10,500. And that $500 value includes our planting time and resources. So the counteroffer that I provided to Public Works, who was strongly advocating full payment of these trees, is that you provide the retail value of those private property trees instead of the full value of us planting them. So the 21 trees at $250 would be $5,250, plus the three trees that they have a purview over that they did not want to release you from. So when you add all of that together, and I'm sorry that that's complicated, but it comes to $6,000 payment in lieu of, I will say that that is less than the value that we would have originally charged you in the preliminary plan, which is 16 trees, at $500 would have been $8,000. So this did require some negotiation from me and the director of Public Works and others, but that is the proposal I would like to make as a condition of approval, and I can try to write that out in a coherent way.
I followed it. I would say, thank you for working with us on the trees, and that sounds agreeable.
Okay. Excellent. I'm glad to hear that. And we're also glad to have the contribution so that we can continue expanding our canopy in the city, which is very important to our quality of life. So with all of that said, those are the conditions, and I don't know how you're going to make the motion other than just saying what he said. But just to recap, we're scratching one and four from the list. And the only other two that I'm adding are that there's a final developer's agreement that includes the additional landscaping and I'll say the public art as well, make sure that that's installed, where you've already previously agreed to put it. And then the payment in lieu of trees, as I just explained, at a value of $6,000. Any questions from the commission about what I just went over?
I don't have a question, but actually, you had some of my gears turning. To relate to one of my questions earlier, is, in that courtyard, is there going to be any retail space available?
No.
I could totally see that being, like I mentioned, like a small retail, I could totally see that being the place for a business with a small internal structure to be able to access the outdoor space and connect the public. I, much like with my earlier hesitations, I have concerns about gates. So it'd be nice to see a flow, but that's more of a comment than it is a...
One of the ideas that we initially had was to bleed out the retail at the corner there into that space. Unfortunately, there is nine feet of elevation change from across that building. So just at that, where the retail is to the courtyard is over six feet of elevation. It created, there was a logistical problem with making a connection between those areas.
Okay. I mean, and like I said, it's more of a comment, even if creative solutions later are found, aside from just bleeding it out, I would love to see that. But I do want to actually circle back to Commissioner Cook's comment. I recognize that state programs are not always able to provide what we need for affordable housing, but I, I'm hoping we can maybe try to problem-solve a little bit. Is there potential for, and this might be something Mr. Lyons may be more apt to speak to, is there potential for us to create a program for young people going through school who may eventually be employed by LGH to provide them an opportunity to get housing at a discounted rate or affordable housing, if you will, so that we can ensure that the residents of the city have some opportunities? What might that potentially be?
So you're talking about establishing a citywide program, which I think is a great idea. I am on, I'm on multiple affordable housing committees, and what you're talking about is something that does need to be explored on a citywide basis, right? You're actually, you're looking at it from, you know, as it's, one, it is, it's a social issue, it's a social problem that needs to be resolved, and there are, there can be mechanisms to achieving that. A program such like what you're talking about, where you try to engage, whether it could be, I mean, you have, the city already has a voucher system, you're talking about a different program, one that, where employers may want to get involved in, and not, not just Blank, I mean, you have a whole city that has a workforce that is looking for, looking to make sure that they attract talent, because their talent is their, is their business.
Absolutely.
And so that's a, that's... That is a, one, I would say, that's an idea that should be explored. It's a, that is a, it's a program, it's not an affordable housing, say, to a development, it's citywide.
Right. Yeah, I think in this case, I'm speaking specifically to the potential for, at least for exploration, for a partnership between LGH and local educational organizations to essentially create a pipeline, if you will, for young people who are being educated in the city of Lancaster to have that opportunity to eventually be employed by LGH someday. Because, you know, I can only imagine medical school, I am not at all in the medical field, but I can only imagine the expenses associated with that education, and that might be an opportunity to encourage talent from the city and also get the talent that you need.
John Lyons, I'm director of public relations with Lancaster General Health. So employees that go to our paid college of health sciences already have most of their educational expenses tied to their employment, so they're reimbursed for that.
Okay.
I think that if there is a discussion from a citywide perspective, I think that's where Mr. Fisher was going, if there's a citywide discussion and analysis-driven in the city, I think that'd be something that we, along with other employers throughout the city, not just LGH, but other, you know, other major employers, would be happy to join in that discussion.
So I'll direct to Mr. Smith real quick. Without putting any onus on them right now in the short term, is there a way that we could amenable create some sort of, like, function so that if we can get enough entities together, we can spark this discussion as a condition or as a recommendation?
Again, I'll echo Mr. Lyons, I think, Lyons, I think is a great idea. I think it's way beyond the purview of this particular decision.
Okay.
So that's something that should involve the council and mayor and many other partners at the table. Certainly commend you for thinking about it. We need to get you in at the very preliminary plan stage, maybe some policy development groups, but appreciate the ideas.
Well, you guys are in the midst of your, working on a comprehensive plan, correct?
That's right.
Perhaps during your, maybe hearings of your comprehensive plan, that might be something, you know, the chamber's getting a new president, why not engage her in discussion as to ways in which the chamber might be able to partner with that as well? Look beyond just this one project or this one block, look throughout the city. What are other partners that are out there? Invite them to that table, have them part of the discussion.
Thank you for engaging in this.
And, you know, my comment is, you know, I share the same comment in terms of affordable housing, and hopefully, and I'm encouraging LGH to take the lead. I mean, you've been here in the city for a long time, and you have money, power, and influence, and I say, take the lead. Someone has to step up and really take the lead on that.
I feel like I should just clarify one point. The housing project and the mixed-use development is a Hankin project, is not an LGH project. They are two separate, we, listen, we... We will own the land, we are purchasing the land, we will own it, we will manage it, we will operate it, we will build it, everything. We are going to build the medical office building, we're going to lease the building to Lancaster General. Everything will be part of your tax, your tax program, everything goes on to the tax rules. We did a fiscal study when this project initially started, and I, I should have re-looked at the number, it was, if, Douglas, you may remember, if I remember correctly, it was right around a million dollars a year that this project is going to bring in from a tax-based standpoint into the city. So there, this is, I mean, and that's, you know, that's annually, that's on an annual basis, this project's going to become an annuity for the city from a tax standpoint.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher, Ms. Love, and Mr. Lyons. Any other comments? Any other comments from the public? So we make a motion for this? Yes. So somebody have, is there a motion on the floor?
I'd like to make a motion to approve subject upon the conditions excluding one and four, and including the two new conditions that Mr. Smith's put forward.
Was that clear enough, Mr. Smith?
Yes, I think so, and I did just put those in writing to you, Neil, too, if you want to check your cellphone. But yes, that's clear enough for me, as long as the developers are okay with that too.
That sounds great to me.
We have a motion on the floor.
A second.
And we have a second. So we'll go with our vote. Mr. Dasher?
Aye.
Mr. Hackett?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Weller?
Aye.
Eyes have it, motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd also like to say, I've really enjoyed the entire process, going through the rezoning, the plan approvals, the discussions with the historic commission, everything. And I'm very excited about the project and bringing it into Lancaster City. So I hope to do another one in the city. This is a, you, great staff, great, great discussions, and a great project at the end of the day. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations. And think of us when you have your ribbon cutting. Okay, well...
We started talking about that today. And yes, you will.
Great.
Next on the agenda, D. Introducing a presentation on land development plan for 202 North Queen Street. ELA Incorporated has submitted a sketch plan for 12-story, 142 residential units, building with 2,800 SF and retail on first floor at street level along Queen slash Chestnut Street and a pocket park on the northwest portion of the property. This is informational presentation without... This is informational presentation without action.
Yeah, Cheryl, sorry to interrupt, did you need those close enough that you need to point? We were just wondering whether we could put them on the table so they're high enough for, for everybody to see them. But is that going to be too high then, or too far away?
Mandali actually, Mandali has most of these.
Oh, okay, great, perfect, even better, yes. Oh, and you, you guys are well-prepared, hi there.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for bringing these whole big packets, I love it.
Okay, yes, you're welcome. Cheryl Love with the LA Group again, and we have Bruce Adelsberger, the architect with us as well tonight, and Andy Capelli from Burger Rental Communities as owner representative as well. So this project started some time ago, we paused a bit with COVID and it's been reinvigorated. We can talk through several of the, the key points, we can walk you through the architecture as well. It is located at the corner of Chestnut, across the bottom of the plan and north Queen Street, up the right-hand side. So the Transit Authority garage is directly across the street or to the right. And this is actually the old rail spur that had left that train station and goes up to North Market. So we have a, kind of an odd-shaped piece there. But this project has worked pretty closely through with historic commission. They have secured their approvals as well as city council approvals for the building itself. From a streetscape standpoint, we would be putting all new curbing around both sides. The brick banding, the streetscape standards, the street trees, working to improve the ADA access at that specific corner. It's actually very difficult, given the street grade, so we're looking at some other alternatives. We did meet with Kevin Flanagan in detail on that, just last week, actually. And this project also will require PANDOT approvals from the Queen Street side up. We will be closing, as you know, it's an existing surface parking lot, there is one driveway. Well, there's a driveway from Queen that accesses that and then through out to Market Street as well right now. So all of that pavement will be removed, the driveways will be removed, we'll put full curbing in and we will integrate that to the surrounding streetscape as well. The back portion is utilized. Currently, this property's pretty heavily used as a pedestrian cut-through, honestly. I'm sure you guys mostly aware of that, it's a very heavy connection through. So we looked at early stages and had met with various staff as to how to accommodate that. I will tell you, the curvilinear design may in fact end up changing. We've recently been working and are still waiting for some direction back from PP&L. But we have some utilities that we need to find access to some transformers and well, well as screening. And the way those are looking, we may need to reorient the way the sidewalk and our green space areas for rain gardens currently are. So visualize the sidewalk would be straight along the top section of that colored area. We'd have one larger stormwater basin along this left lower side. And then the transformers, we would provide some screening for, but they would actually need to be as close to Market Street up in this area on the plan as possible, because this site is just very, very well occupied from the building itself, as it should be for this, this high, high-visibility corner. So there's a real super quick rundown of the site. We would provide lighting in, along all of the walkway areas. There would be well-lit from all of the building along the north side. And we are also looking at maintaining and/or improving the historic style, the acorn-style lighting that is your streetscape standard with the King lumines along, along the streetscape. Currently, those don't exist along Chestnut, there's a very old rusty vertical street light there. But we would look to provide improvements along that whole lower portion, so that would feel very different and, and more in keeping with the rest of your streetscape throughout the downtown area. I think Bruce would maybe be better suited to talk you through some of the building components, the numbers, the way they have their, their floor plans orchestrated.
Good evening. So that
You want to state your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, it's Bruce Adelsberger, I'm with Barton Partners Architects. So the image you are looking at is the main entry along Queen Street and the adjacent existing building. The design, as far as exterior, has gone through a couple of rounds with the historic commission. I think some of you are aware of that and this is kind of where I'm ended. Some of the features of the building also changed in those couple of rounds. But essentially, it's a 12-story building, 142 apartments. The ground level is a combination of the front of house, if you will, of the apartments, back of house of the apartments, meaning mechanical, storage, that kind of thing. And then along the Chestnut Street side, which will be another view, is the retail. So this is a good corner view of the two main streets. And on the left side of that image, you can see the retail purposely designed along Chestnut. And then on the right, that same main entry into the apartment, so they're kind of segregated. As Cheryl mentioned earlier, there is street lighting that's not only going to be provided on poles, not shown in this image, but also on the building itself. So that lighting will not just be kind of facade lighting, it will also cast light onto the sidewalk as well. And otherwise, the materials themselves are a combination of brick and stucco, or also known as ephes, on the upper levels, but brick down below, and mainly relating to obviously the surrounding context. Okay. I guess, other than that, is there's any other questions as we go along? This, this view here is toward the park and a portion of the building comes out six stories high, what we call the spur, that comes out somewhat toward that open park that Cheryl described earlier. On the top of that is a small amenity deck and designed for, privately for the residents of the building. So that, they will be able to kind of have that view there and overlook the park from that vantage point. Yes?
I have a question.
Sure.
What else is in this piece of the spur? Are there apartments actually in there?
Yes, yeah, so kind of like what you see in the light color up above are all apartments. But when you get to the very top of it, on the seventh floor, that's a roof deck there. And on that seventh floor, but tucked into the main building, is a common area amenities space.
Okay.
Okay, so, yeah, but all within the residential realm, basically.
And I heard you say you went through a lot of, oh, I'm sorry, I heard you say you went through
If there's a floor plan, I could walk you through, if you're interested. But there is a fitness center on the first floor as well and a few amenities spaces as well.
Okay.
It's on that, it's on that first level.
Yes.
You see that floor plan? Okay, great. So that gives you a little more of an idea of the, the functions of the first floor. So you can see there are two retail spaces along Chestnut Street and then the front of house and entry on Queen, right there. There is a service area trash room all the way toward the corner, next to the alley. So that's how trash will get in and out of the building for the apartment use. Okay? And then in the back of the building, along the spur, is kind of a lounge area and fitness center. And that's what you saw on the, on the exterior. So that hopefully connects the dots there for you on that. And then the back of house, next to the existing four-story building, that's all mechanical, storage, maintenance kind of space. So that's kind of the first floor.
So when you say there's an alley there, so there's a space in between the three-story building and what's going to be constructed?
That's right.
That's sidewalk area.
Okay.
Yes.
It's a pedestrian connection that ranges about five to six feet wide on the right-hand side, I believe, and gets slightly wider as we go to the west.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I also have a question about alleys. So I, I see that against the three-story building, you have an alley.
Yep.
And then against the four-story building, there's also an alley.
Correct. That one is not public, that is really a gated alley and that's going to be really for maintenance and strictly accessing the back of house.
Okay. Right.
Pedestrian, yeah.
I definitely understand that they are for, or like, that, I wanted to say, I love the top one. Like, I appreciate you guys maintaining that connection. I was walking down that parcel the other day and I was just like, wow, we're about to lose this connection. What, like, and, but I'm encouraged to see that. I understand right now the intention is to keep the other one private. I was just thinking about how sometimes the sun hits different in different locations. It might be nice to see that be public as well. I understand there's not much use back there, but sometimes people just want to take a stroll a different way. I appreciate just having the one.
This would, with North Queen, most times this would be a very darker space.
With a new 12-story building, yeah.
Right, right.
But, yeah, I think that, you know, for, for security and for other purposes, this really leads to someone else's property in the back. And if we really don't control what goes, what goes through there, I think, and, and we are very, very close to the property line in our, our building. It's still on the gate with sidewalk, the larger it's been from sidewalk to the north.
Gotcha.
It has a, a more consistent connection.
Right, yeah, I did notice that it, it was, that's why actually when I saw alley there, I was like, oh, I definitely want to ask about this, because on the color drawing, it, I didn't realize that was an alley at first. But I definitely understand there's some constraints with that. But let me ask this, against the, the spur, are there windows along the side of the spur?
Yeah.
On the top and bottom?
Yes.
Okay.
There's, there's no windows on the back end, because we're too close to the property line to even have windows.
Oh.
Okay, that's more of a code issue there. But on the, facing the park and along the public sidewalk that Cheryl mentioned, yes, we'll leave windows for views in and out and kind of a sense of security.
Gotcha. So definitely keep that top alley, I, I love that, I love the fact that you guys incorporated that into this plan. I'll segue a little bit. I don't know if it's too early to ask about this, but are there any senses of the ability to provide affordable housing in this area? In the, in the project?
I mean, I, I believe it's all market rate, Andy? All market rate.
Okay.
That's what it's intended for.
Okay.
Yep. This is a technical question about the alley to the north. I see that you have some drains in there and a storm pipe, is that taking anything but the water that lands on it?
Well, I think a lot of the water, as we had it designed, it was pretty much finalized and we are now looking at that again with PP&L, it doesn't, however, this is, these are also connected points with different things that are available. We are capturing everything, it is the by the path and it's integrated into our green space at this point. And in fact, we're very close with Ryan Potter and Andrew Brown as to the current location for us to connect into. And it was to avoid, like, these systems in Chestnut Street. And the preference was for us to give it to the larger systems, which would be coming down North Market, which you wouldn't do, but there's more availability there for us to ultimately discharge. However, we are collecting all of this and it's going into the garden. We actually, I was shocked as well, we got it provisioned there, given that it was a railroad spur over time, we didn't do this, we didn't come in now, but we were able to bring that and it made it so we were growing that ability to work with, to work with this. And then ultimately, that has under drains and it's, you know, all the side, 100-year storm and whatnot. And then there is a connection into a new manhole at this point that would be, and had that, so it's important.
Thanks, yeah, that, that's helpful, I was, I was curious, I was, my question was really regarding, I mean, that, that was great. My question was regarding overland relief, if that alley were to get flooded in a 100-year storm, but it sounds like the Okay.
Yeah, believing, we've been highly sensitive to our proximity to, you know, base building, field construction of those, that major systems. We have looked at this topic very currently, we actually did underground utility mapping of the entire complex prior to, and integrated that with our survey, because we needed to know what was there. We have a great site, we were able to move forward and get it in, so a lot of things involved. And we're excited to move this forward with some modification, although I love this group, it's probably going to turn straight, which is interesting because we had a public comment very early when this project first came out, it was a kind of a certification from the public. Why aren't we implementing the straightness of the rails? We're actually now, like, all we are, we have to do that, so there's opportunity.
For sure, yeah, thanks for explaining that, I was concerned about the impact of the building in an event of a large storm. So it sounds like you guys have gone through extensive survey in order to, to handle that.
I don't have any question related to stormwater and all of that. But I'm sure you all are considering lighting through that alleyway and security, okay, yeah.
The, the entire ground floor will have lighting all the way around.
And is there any, anything below the ground level?
No, there's no basement.
Okay.
No basement, slab on grade.
Thank you.
Was the height of the structure permitted by right? Yes, yeah. Okay, yeah, I wasn't, I figured it was in the CBD one.
I have just a couple of questions lingering from the last time we met. One point of discussion was the main entrance door opening into the public right of way. Just curious whether you were able, okay, it looks like you inset it, okay, you were able to make that work.
Yeah, all the public doors have now been inset, Doug.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's
Great.
Yeah, yeah.
I think another question we briefly touched on was just about street lighting on the Chestnut Street side. So, yes.
Okay, excellent. Okay. Yeah, and there may only be room for one or something on the Chestnut Street side. But I know that there's nothing there now because it was a parking lot, but now if there's a building, I think that would be good.
Um, one thing we didn't mention, but we will be seeking, um, we've been talking about it before, but it's not, uh, and I think it was. Because of the trash room, we located this upper level. We will be going to the commission to look for some, uh, a request for a striped, uh, load zone. Uh, previous project, we were, I think we were successfully getting three different ones, different size back on them. So certainly hoping to get at least one. Do have two areas to return if possible, but really that's something to work with, no requests, numbers, etc. Uh, we are curating, uh, you know, some full curving. So if we are losing some loss of parking in this zone, we may be able to curate from an area where there's current driveway. But it's not really a loss of, you know, parking itself, but for our strong locations per se. Um, so that was, uh, something that we're, we're looking to do. And then the trash would be rolled out.
Yes.
And picked up on that, that bag.
Yep.
Back in, otherwise it's.
Yeah, there's no vehicles driving into the building. Yeah, but everything's rolled out. Right. With. With relation to that loading zone, would that be something that could practic, practically be used for like a door dash as well or? Okay.
Yeah, I think that's where we would like to criticize this community, um, you know, knowing that we're going to have, you know, a lot of residents. We would like to have that.
Yeah. It over the whole bit.
Chuck.
I forgot that we had this.
Well, it won't respond.
Okay.
Um, sir, if you don't mind, uh, coming up to the podium, I, we just, uh, trying to be cognizant of those who are streaming, um, this evening. And they can't hear anything in the room unless, uh, we're on a microphone. So I just recalled that we had a handheld, we just got it recently. So for, this is, when you do need to move about the room, we'll use that in the future, yeah.
Hi, Andy Capelli with Burger Rental Communities, good evening. Um, the, the loading zones also the main access for moving tenants in and out of the building. They have, they'll have a mo, small moving van, but they'll need a place, uh, to park that. So that's really a critical loading zone, that one in particular. The second one we're, we're looking for is so that the retail areas have places to unload trucks and deliveries and those sorts of things. There's also a retail trash room on that side of the building as well that would need access. As well as our main electrical room and in the back house areas that may need service. So that's why we're requesting to. Thank you.
Any other questions? Commission?
I have a question. Uh, is this Cornish line, as I'm referring here, is in the line with this Cornish line? As a four-story building here, it's same as the height of this four-story building?
All of them are way inside. I can fly.
So here is, this is lower than the existing building, but it kind of picks up that line to answer your question.
Oh, okay.
Hadn't thought about that in a while.
Okay, so, and the, the, the distance between this existing building and the proposed building, do you know how?
Yeah, it generally, both alleys are between five to six feet. It's not exactly parallel to each other.
And, and do you think that this five to six feet distance is enough for natural light and ventilation for this, uh, like, four-story, um, four, four-floor or levels of these residential units here?
As far as from a code standpoint, yes. Um, you're only required to have a, a fairly limited amount of, of, of light and, and air. But yes, it will certainly meet code.
Okay.
Sure.
Thank you.
And the other thing just related to that is we are restricted on the amount of openings in the building because of that proximity. And we've taken that into account as well from a kind of fire safety standpoint.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Anyone else?
Uh, yes, so more of a comment. Um, I think that this is good so far, but I'd like to, this, this might be a little weird to say. Um, but I feel like we have architecture in the city that as, um, people are constructing, I don't want to increase the cost of a project unnecessarily. But I feel like there's an opportunity to do some modern architecture that's like, the, the basic brick, I understand this is just a, um, a, a projection of what may be. Um, very much emulates like the basicness of the county building to the other side. And I don't feel like it really does justice to the adjacent four-story structure that has a nice style to it. I don't want that sto, style copied. I know that the historical commission probably wouldn't like that either. But I feel like there's an opportunity for some like avant-garde style, um, whatever it may be, to create a diversity to the streetscape and keep it away from just basic brick everywhere. Um, but that, that's really my only comment on that. I don't know if, um, I don't, obviously I don't want you to like raise floors up and down unnecessarily and ruin the fire safety aspects. But, um, those three floors above the retail especially, I see like an opportunity for it to be a little more stylish.
Yeah, I think, I think that, um, what is not depicted in this, uh, we're working toward is adding a lot more detail into the brick itself. So certainly if you look very carefully even at this rendering, you can see some accent bands down at the lower level. So that, first of all, at the pedestrian level, that begins to give another level of detail. And then what's not shown, but we are working on are like headers above the, the, all the windows and openings and doors, sills. So again, not trying to mimic, as you said, Tony, mimic any of the really old historic buildings, but at least pay homage to them and give this, give a sense of scale. The big move on our new design frankly is the corner. There, if you look at it, we dropped the brick down intentionally on the corner. There's a, that view that we had earlier, uh, that showed the, the corner, that creates a much more dramatic, and if you will, bit of a more modern, attempt at creating more drama to the entire corner. Uh, and then letting the two side facades, uh, uh, along Queen and Chestnut relate a little bit more closely to the scale of the adjacent buildings. Uh, if that makes sense to you.
It, it makes some sense to me. I, I, I don't follow completely, but I think I follow enough.
Yeah, this is the view that Cheryl, if you could just, yeah, then the one on the other side actually. Perfect, thank you. Yeah, this is what I'm talking about where this brick drops down and back up.
Gotcha.
And then it creates a much more dramatic effect at night, for example, this is going to be pretty well lit.
Oh, great.
So, oh yeah, so there's, there's only so much we can show in these, in these renderings, but just to verbally describe in terms of this level where we are for the project.
The dropdown makes more sense. Now, I was like at the bottom of the building for some reason, that makes way more sense.
Yeah, so again, at the pedestrian level, we still keep the brick with the accent bands. But then if you stand back from it and look at it, you'd be like, wow, this, this does feel like, you know, a 21st century building here, okay?
Okay, and is the, I see on the top, there's the little juts coming up from the roof. Maybe I'm not seeing the dimension right, but is there going to be a like green roof on top or anything like that?
No, there's, there's no green roof, there's no need for it in terms of what Cheryl explained earlier in terms of stormwater management.
Okay.
But, um, but this is really more of just a decorative pop-up, just to give the building some relief frankly.
Okay.
And this is the most dramatic of it. Um, there are smaller ones even to acknowledge the corners as it turns at the alley and also one at the spur as well.
Gotcha, and I take it none of these window openings are balconies of any kind?
Correct, there's no residential balcony. Some of the earlier versions of our design did have it, but that was one of the major changes. And again, we worked very closely with staff and, uh, pla, uh, historic commission on that.
Um, do you, just because I don't know, what were some of the reasons the balconies were taken out?
In no particular order, cost.
Okay.
There's, it's always a factor. Um, and quite frankly, um, it, it actually gives a bit of a cleaner look to the building.
Okay.
Yeah, more streamlined, and then lastly, it actually gives back some space to the units, okay? I mean, the balcony is, you know, quasi-living space, but as far as year-round in the living units, we are able to gain back a little bit more living space, so kind of, you know, all year-round. The units themselves are not huge, I mean, they're in-city units, so every little square inch and square foot counts.
You said, uh, 142 units.
Right.
Um, could you just, and I understand this is not completed, could you provide some details like how those will be parceled out? Like efficiencies, one, two bedrooms and the rates that you're expecting potentially?
So I'll start out with that, that part. Uh, most of the units are one-bedroom, the majority of their one, one-bedroom unit. There is just, um, one type of unit that's an efficiency or studio type. That, um, but it only repeats itself up, you know, in one area of the building. So let's just say, you know, 11 of those units roughly.
Okay.
Just to give you an idea of in terms of ratio. Um, and then there's a, a relatively small percentage, maybe 20% of, of two-bedrooms.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the balance, but it's mostly one and two-bedroom units.
Do you have a sense of what you might be looking at for, um, rent per square foot?
We'd be in line with Henkin in the $2 a square foot to 250, that range.
Okay.
And our, our smallest unit's at 450 square feet.
Gotcha. Uh, are you engaging in a lease with RTA for parking spaces across the street? You are?
Yes.
For how many spaces?
I'm not sure.
Okay, is there a range you're shooting for? Okay. Okay. Great, cool. No problem, uh, well, congratulations. Cheryl, do you happen to know from RTA?
Off the record, be, off the record, because I'm not, I have not seen paperwork, but I think there are discussions for 100. 100 spaces, um, from a leasing standpoint in, in discussion stages.
Yeah.
I don't think anything is formalized. I think they're, they're starting discussions and they're working back and forth. But, um, clearly it is, uh, it's an improvement with this plan over previous where we did have some parking in at first floor level. If you remember back to that Douglas, it's.
Certainly.
It's really, um, evolved into, uh, providing those retail and commercial spaces at the large majority of the down-street, street level. So parking being across the street certainly convenient and that's the purpose of those garages. So we, I, I think that's somewhere where the discussions are at this current time.
Great, I think that would be a, a good amenity to add for a project of, of this kind of density. Um, and I think it was definitely a good move to remove the parking from the streetscape, uh, level so that we have more engagement there. Um, so I'll look forward to further update on that in the future.
Right, bicycle parking and whatnot, we're looking at those things as being in, in the building. Um, I believe correct at this point, or we'll bring you more details on that.
Sure.
Clearly, we know that's a requirement.
Yeah.
It's kind of gone around, um, through some discussions, but, um, we do have to work through that. Um, you know, we'll work with Cody with forest tree species, certainly. Um, the trees that are out there, he's already looked at and has conversed with me that he would support those as being removed. Um, we can get more appropriate species in there and more of them than what's existing.
That's great, I know you still have more work to do, so this is just an introductory conversation. So really appreciate the, the presentation.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, they, they are in public, yeah. So moving right along, we have the Housing Subcommittee.
Uh, Mr. Chair, we are supposed to have, uh, Lisa Greener, um, present on affordable housing this evening. Um, actually, this is the second time we'll have to reschedule with her. We had to cancel because of a very full agenda last time, she had to cancel for this evening. Uh, we hope to bring her back in June to discuss, uh, challenges around affordable housing funding. Uh, she is the Director of Community Basics, um, an affordable housing developer in Lancaster County. Um, so other than that, um, nothing more on the Housing Subcommittee.
Okay, thank you. And then Comprehensive Plan Report?
Yes, um, boy, there's a lot to say here. I have, um, many things I want to share with you, probably at the next meeting. Um, we have a, uh, visual preference survey that is designed, ready to go. And, um, we'll be doing this for each quadrant of the city, northeast, northwest, southeast, southwest. And, uh, getting into the types of development that people want to see in their neighborhoods. And we've taken each quadrant and we've divided it up, uh, by areas, um, kind of based on urban form. For instance, corridors, um, or high-density areas, et cetera. And, um, it's a little bit more than I should, I can, I should probably bother to explain at this moment. But my goal is to actually have the Planning Commission work through all four quadrants over the next several meetings. Um, so at the next meeting in June, take care, thank you. Um, I would like to walk through that exercise with you. Um, if you are able to attend, I think our next meeting is, is it June 1st? June 1st, um, we'll begin going through that exercise with the Planning Commission so that we can use your feedback uh, and incorporate that into the comprehensive plan. So, um, see you on June 1st, I hope, and we can walk through that in, in more detail. And, uh, yeah, I, I can send a sample ahead of time, um, for your information. Um, we did get back our community engagement report. We have done a curs, we've done a, a review, actually, we rewrote the entire thing because we were not happy with our first draft, which is why it's taken us so long to share it with you. Um, but I'm feeling much better about the place that we, that it is in right now. So, uh, it details all the engagement that we've done basically over the last year on the comprehensive plan. Um, so I'll be sharing that with you in the very, uh, near future. Um, the Lancaster Today Report is the other big one that we've been trying to push to the finish line. And every time we get it back, we think of one more person that needs to review it. Um, we're trying to be very robust in, um, the reviews that we have. Um, and now that we have a, a public art manager that we just hired, um, into the Planning Bureau actually, um, I'm having her do one last review on the public art section. Um, so that is, uh, like 95% done and it's our existing conditions report of what Lancaster looks like today and over the last, uh, 20 years or so. So, uh, look forward to those documents, um, really in, in the coming weeks. Um, and, uh, you'll learn a lot more about our land use plans on June 1st when we walk through that exercise.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Smith. Um, other business?
Uh, I actually have a couple of questions, uh, for commission. The first one is, um, I know we've had some cancellation, I'm, I'm obviously newest to this process. I know we've had some cancellations this year, but is there a way for us to, like, like, why are those cancellations occurring? Can we figure out a way to make more of a public engagement so people, like, we can literally just talk about things as a quorum? engagement? So people, like, we can literally just talk about things as a quorum. Um, I feel like sometimes I'm telling people about Planning Commission. It occurs every, every first and third Wednesday at 6:00 PM, but then it's like, we don't have business and it's like, oh, you've canceled the meeting. Um- Sure. Uh, Mr. Dastro, I'm happy to address that. So we are, other than City Council, we are the only commission that convenes more than once a month. Um, so I, recognizing that this is a volunteer board, I, I value your time very much. Um, when, generally when we do not have action items that we have to take action on, um, we will cancel the meeting, recognizing we meet much more than 12 times a year. Um, around holidays in particular, I try to have our agendas buttoned up, uh, ahead of time so that we can say not convene the week of July 4th, not convene the week of Christmas or New Year's, things like that. Um, so, uh, that is mostly out of, um, respect for, for your time and for ours too, as I, we work many late nights other than just these, uh, these Planning Commission meetings. Um, going forward, there may have to be some select, uh, times, for instance, with these land use exercises. If we do not have action items for, over the next several weeks, I may ask that we convene anyway to conduct those exercises. Um, so we try to keep it focused on business that, that must be done. And if there is engagement that people want to have with us, they can do that at one of our scheduled meetings when we have agenda items. Okay. Um, so, and then the other question is, I, I've been talking to some people in the community. I actually did send an email to Cheryl and I didn't get a response. Um, I feel like we, I don't know if this is within the realm of the Planning Commission, but we look things up on Google Maps often and we're talking more about bus connections, which I think is great. But something that I feel is a disconnect between the public actually using public transit and knowing about it is like, you can't go on Google Maps and search directions and get transit-based directions. You have to go through the third-party bus finder application or the RTA app. Um, it, it's not convenient and sometimes it's frankly broken. Um, and I, they seem to have the GPS technology or the technology needed to get this data uploaded into, um, map-based systems like Apple and Google Maps. Is there any way we can encourage them to do that? Cause I feel like it would also make our jobs easier because we could then search something and we would, we would know what transit connections are present. Can you look into that and get back to us? Well, I, I guess, um, I mean, I can look into it. Um, would, would we be able to essentially as a commission, write a letter to RTA requesting that? Can you draft a letter and present it to the Planning Commission? I can do that. Okay. Great. Let's have you do that. I believe this is something RTA will have to submit directly to Google. So I, I would encourage you to reach out to RTA first. Um, I don't know that the letter has to come to the planning, uh, has to come from the Planning Commission, but I certainly appreciate the question. I, I've noticed that myself and I know that that probably is a barrier to people finding ways to take transit in the city. Okay. Thank you. Yeah.
Any, any other questions? You, you good? Public participation? Oh, hearing none. So I'll make a motion that we adjourn the meeting. Somebody put a motion on the floor?
A motion to adjourn?
We have a second?
Second.
We have a second to adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
We say aye. Meeting is over. Wow.